We've taken access to record. We've got everyone on.
My sincere apologies for the delay.
No worries, Sean. You're doing great. Okay, so let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'm gonna see what time it is here. This work session, the Market City Commission, on December 1st is now called to order at 5:29 PM. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. City Clerk, roll call please, and if you could ask everyone to include their physical location, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, so if everybody could, according to the Open Meetings Act, we just need the county and the city that you're calling in from. Probably pretty obvious, but Commissioner Bonzall?
Yeah, I'm here calling in from City of Marquette, Marquette County.
Commissioner Davis?
I am here in City of Marquette, Marquette County.
Commissioner Handley?
I'm here as well from the City of Marquette in Marquette County.
Commissioner Mayor?
I am here, City of Marquette, Marquette County.
Commissioner Stonehouse?
City of Marquette, Marquette County.
Mayor Protem Hill?
Present, City of Marquette, Marquette County.
And Mayor Smith?
Present, City of Marquette, Marquette County. Did we get Commissioner Davis? Did I miss that one? We got it? Oh, sorry about that.
Yep, got him.
Good, perfect, we're all good. Okay, roll call complete. I don't have any announcements this evening. Brings us to our first public comment session of the evening. Public comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments. Do we have anyone for public comment this evening?
We do not have a written comment, but it appears there's a phone number.
Yep, that person said that they were representing a member of the public when they called in. I'm not sure if you had any comments this evening, sir, or if you were just listening for right now.
Thank you, I am just listening for right now.
Okay, thank you. And so no other call-ins that you can see, Sean? Okay. Public comment is now closed. So our one agenda item of the evening is a discussion on economic development. So this is a work session, and I just wanted to preface this because we do have two new commissioners. Work sessions are a chance for the commission to get additional information from city staff or from outside partners, from, you know, maybe business partners, if we're looking at closing on a purchase of property, gathering of information, asking questions, learning more about a subject. No voting happens at a work session, so we're not going to be deciding anything tonight. We're not going to be, you know, taking any votes, just discussion, conversation. Typically, how I like to run a work session is that whatever presentation happens, we allow the presentation to be completed in full, and then I run through the commission for any questions or comments, you know, one by one afterwards. There are at times a work session where we have several presentations, and I may choose to stop between each presenter if it makes sense, but just so you kind of have a general idea of how I like to have those flow, to keep things moving, but also make sure that we have a chance to ask questions. Now, tonight, our topic is economic development. We only have one topic, so we'll let Dennis Stekewitz, the Director of Community Development, run through his whole presentation before we kind of engage in some discussion and conversation. So this work session is really focused on kind of back to basics of economic development for the City of Marquette. It kind of came out of some conversations with the city manager during his annual review, looking at some things that, you know, projects we wanted to look at and work on, and I appreciate him and his staff for kind of bringing economic development back up. It tends, you know, to be a back burner project at times because we've had so many other things going on, but it's something that we really kind of wanted to move towards the front burner in the last couple of years if we can. I know Sean Havens worked on an economic development plan for us, which we approved within the last year, which was a great start, but we're just kind of revisiting what economic development means for the City of Marquette, what our goals and objectives are, and basically informational, you know. From here, you know, it may take a different direction, as we do have some properties in the City of Marquette that are available for development, but I'm really hoping that we just kind of stick to basics here tonight. So with that, I will turn it over to Dennis Stekewitz. And again, if you have questions or comments, I'll go ahead and call on each commissioner after his remarks. Go ahead, Dennis, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening to the city commissioners. Some of you I have not met in person yet, but welcome to the, welcome to the city commission. I'm your Community Development Director. You will certainly get phone calls about somebody in my office, I guarantee it, usually the code enforcement people, but tonight we're going to talk about economic development. And what I'd like to do is give an overview of our economic development program. I'd like to talk a little bit about redevelopment-ready communities. We'll go through the matrix that we have on projects, and then I'd also like to talk about, a little bit about how we interface ourselves into the overall picture of economic development, because as you know, there are a number of agencies out there that are purportedly economic development agencies from all different types of levels and different things that they specialize in. And then we'll, I'll close out with a little bit about, you know, what we have been viewing our role as in public versus private positions with economic development and responsibility. So with that, I'm going to share a screen. Everybody should be able to see this. This is a, just a very short PowerPoint, but you know, that term "economic development" can mean a lot of things to a lot of people, to residents in the community. Economic development can mean jobs. That's, for a lot of people, that's the number-one metric, is jobs. For other folks in the community, economic development can mean tourism. It can mean preparing for the number of tourists that we're going to have. For others in the community, economic development can mean having appropriate infrastructure in place. For others in the community, economic development can be the Shopko Building. Well, you know, why is it vacant? How come the private sector isn't responding to that? And for others, it can be a number of many things. The way that we've taken the approach with economic development in the City of Marquette has been a, more or less, we look at it like a holistic approach, or more of an ecosystem within itself, being that all of those little bits and pieces mean something to the big picture of economic development. And once we get a grasp of that ecosystem, kind of our role falls into an atmosphere of facilitation, being ready to be able to respond to the private sector when it has certain needs. And whether that is facilitating, you know, hard brick-and-mortar development, tourism, certainly on a yearly basis, our capital improvements, plan our infrastructure, and then you have throw the parks in there and a lot of other things. And it all wraps basically around the quality of life. You have good economic development, and generally you have a good quality of life for the community. You know, several examples that we've most recently completed are some of the closings. Parcel 2 on Founder's Landing is going to close soon. Parcel 2A already closed. You drive by there, there's a hotel going up. Certainly, there's a number of jobs, and once some of the brownfield stuff is completed, that turnaround and dumps money into the local revolving fund that could be used in other places, and there's tons of spinoffs that come from that, and eventually a good solid tech base. Another example was the sale of the Hartwood property. We've accomplished a lot over the past years, and that in turn helped support a lot of goals for the community in that, you know, we were able to get a return on investment and create some jobs with the long-year parcel, and yet you were able to preserve a big component of tourism and quality of life. So all of these things come into play. What we have been working with is the MEDC and the Redevelopment-Ready Community Certification. And this is a, this is a really key aspect of our, you know, what I like to call economic development ecosystem, because the RRC community itself lets people know that we are ready and we are open to do business. And there are a number of different things that it looks at. Now, there are only forty, I believe forty, forty-five communities in the entire state of Michigan that have received the certification. We are basically one document away from receiving the certification, and we anticipate to have that done within the coming month or so. It's actually one that's in our planning department right now. But it, what it does is it, it takes a look at this entire ecosystem, and it makes sure that things like our zoning, our codes, our infrastructure, our capital improvements plan, our community master plan, and all of those things are based upon community input. And then we have action items established in place of who's going to handle what certain requests and things along that line, so that we have put ourselves in a position to be the facilitator. Certainly, when you talk about economic development, there becomes a little bit of rub between public sector and private sector, depending on how you look at it. A lot of times, in the economic development field itself, there are, sometimes you're dealing with intellectual property. The government may have a conflict of interest. They could be looked at as being possibly picking a winner or a loser. So it's important to recognize that important balance that we have with those. And that RRC process really, really assists us with doing that. And it's a very competitive nature with a lot of, a lot of, a lot of players. A little bit more about RRC. It, you know, it's really to attract and retain businesses. We offer superior customer service, have a streamlined process. We have pertinent information available around the clock for anyone to view. If anybody's visited the Land Development Code Portal, you can basically go in there and click on your property on a map, and it'll link you to everything that you would need to know code-wise in the city to at least be able to do your research and prepare yourself to come in and look at doing permits or whatever you may need to be. Transparent, predictable, and efficient development experience. We, transparency is really important. When you, when you look at somebody coming to the community and, you know, wanting to make an investment in the community, when they put their pro forma together and they're, you know, they're starting to do the dollar signs on it, you really can't budget for unpredictable things, okay, and that will chase people away. So the more predictable you can be in the long run, that helps efficiency on the developer's end of things. And it also looks at planning for new investment or reinvestment. We identify our assets and opportunities, which goes along with the vacant property. Or in a lot of cases, Lake Superior is a wonderful asset for us. It's a lot of cold water. Does that tie into high-tech and so on and so forth? And then it helps us focus a little bit on our limited resources, which we may learn over the course of time with a lot of tourism. Maybe our roads are, you know, getting a little congested and things along those lines, and that ties into that whole ecosystem, such as capital improvements, planning, and so on and so forth. And, you know, really great, really great program. So Sean did author an economic development plan that was approved by the city commission, and I'm going to let Sean kind of, kind of rub you, run you through it. Really, it's identified ourselves as a regional hub for healthcare, business, recreation, and academics. And then we allow multiple opportunities to encourage and support sustainable development. Sustainable economic development, like I said, can mean a lot of things to a lot of different people. It can mean, you know, things such as invent NMU, where, you know, people can go in there and have some working space and some opportunities to get assistance, to advance their idea into a business or so on and so forth. Or, you know, we used to also have the lending ability that Dennis West was doing for quite some time. And, and then you have representatives for the larger entities, such as the community partnership and things like that. So really trying to tie all those together and create an economic identity for ourselves above and beyond being a quality place to, to work. So Sean, I will turn it over to you. If you want, I can stop the share, and you can bring one up, or you can just tell me when to flip slides.
Oh, I'll just tell you.
All right.
So the economic development plan was developed not only to put the city in compliance with the charter, as having an economic development plan is a requirement of the charter. It was also made to help satisfy the requirement of the RRC certification, as Dennis mentioned. What it does is it describes the city, identifies our external partners, identifies not only our city plans, such as the master plan, a community master plan, and Parks Rec Master Plan, and other documents like that. It also identifies regional, regional and local plans, and how we are either working with them or are in compliance with it, or how our goals coincide. The plan itself sets economic development goals and lists strategies for achieving them. They're largely built around the city's existing economic development activities, and they're meant to continue the city forward along its current trajectory. It's like we've been very successful in what we've been doing, and that's kind of how the plan was developed. It also includes a review component and implementation matrix to track our progress. But the five goals, they're fairly broad, but they kind of try to bring in every aspect of what economic development in a city should be. They are improving and diversifying the tax base, increasing and diversifying the employment base, supporting local businesses and encouraging growth, improving the city's relationship with the local business community, and being responsive to their needs and concerns, and improving quality of life for citizens. So as part of this, we have the implementation matrix. It assists with tracking our economic development efforts. It's divided into three opportunities with strategies and action items that help measure those efforts. So basically, how are we doing with our goals, and actual action items we can accomplish that reflect that. So there's some charts on the following pages that show breakdown of this implementation. Oh, this is the matrix, matrix itself. So you can see on the left side, there's the opportunity. Then it goes into action items, strategies, the responsible party for doing that, the completion date, and then the current status. And this is something that I keep updated on a rolling basis. Some of the items have, you know, definite end dates. Some of them are ongoing. Some of them are just kind of an annual thing.
And I will add to what Sean is discussing here. If you note in that right column, there's an awful lot of green. So kudos to a lot of the department heads and departments in the city that even during COVID, and, you know, during the last year or so, we've been able to knock a lot of pieces off of this economic development plan. So, I mean, it's working good, and I think Sean is going to give a little further breakdown here.
Yeah, and this matrix is something that I can send out to the commission or put on the website. But you'll see, you know, going through it, that a lot of things that were incomplete or are red right now have really been due to the pandemic and our just inability to do the normal kind of work we otherwise would be doing. So like, one of the first opportunities is encouraging the sale and development of city-owned surplus property and the redevelopment of existing spaces. We are eighty-seven point five percent complete on this one. So there's only one incomplete item under this opportunity. Then, opportunity two was supporting efforts to make the city a desirable place to live and a hub for tourism. Obviously, this one's a little bit more red and yellow than the others, and that was in large part due to the pandemic.
As well, this one, if I may, involves a lot of, a good part of cooperation from the private sector and Convention and Visitors Bureau, and, and other players to be able to assist the city with accomplishing this goal. So, you know, it wasn't just a matter of we weren't working much during COVID. It's really hard to coordinate a lot of this activity with the pandemic that was going on.
And two of those goals were actually involving the Marquette Chamber of Commerce, which has since folded since the adoption of this plan, so those are, were unable to be completed regardless. And then opportunity three is focusing efforts to promote job opportunities and retaining existing talent. And this one is seventy percent complete, with just only a couple of incomplete items. And that's basically the overview of, you know, our economic development plan and where we're at with it. The plan's available on our website. I'm happy to send it out if anybody would like it sent directly to them.
Well, thank you, Sean. And I would just like to close a little bit with some of the references and the basis for what we've been, been working on here. And a lot of it stems from the, when the, when there was a rewrite to the charter. That charter amendment provided Section thirteen point six. There's a section on economic development, the economic development plan, that placed that in the hands of the city manager, his designate. And it, it, you know, it's with concurrence with the city commission, of course, but the, the economic development plan, as well as the, the next section that deals with strategic plan, city manager to the city commission, along with department head being involved in that. The basis for a lot of that information, and it's referenced in the charter, is your community master plan, your downtown plan, a lot of those key area, sub-area plans that you do. Those are kind of the exercises where you go out and you meet with the community over the course of a year or so. And they, you know, the, usually the people that show up, but, you know, we've done surveys before and whatnot. They, they try to tend, they tend to identify trends of what they want the community to be like later on. And then you take a lot of those informations and plug them in the economic development plan, which becomes part of the ingredient for when the city commission works on the strategic plan. So you have all of these big plans in a thirty-thousand-foot view, and then you kind of narrow yourself down through economic development plan and strategic plan to where you actually start picking off individual projects that help bring that thirty-thousand-foot view down to more of reality. And that, and we have addressed a lot, many of these things, of course, through the city code. I can think of some recent, I put some recent examples in here. The Land Development Code was a big culmination of, you know, we had a nineteen seventy-eight zoning ordinance that, you know, the processes in there were months and, and months to obtain permits and things like that. And, you know, even though we can still be better, I think we've made a really, really good leap with the Land Development Code to be more responsive to the community. Another example is the commission adopting the MRTMA or the marijuana ordinance to allow marijuana sales and going through that process with the planning commission, then the city commission adopting the ordinance. That's another example of economic development, because you're allowing something in your community that's going to be job creation and so on, so forth. And then the, you know, the last, the big item is the Redevelopment-Ready Community Program. I, I hope to be able to present that certification to the city commission shortly in the near future, because it, it most certainly is, it means a lot, not only from a staff perspective, because of the amount of work that's gone into it by all of our staff, but I think it really could mean a lot to the City of Marquette in the long run, because that identification says we are ready to be even more awesome than we are now. So I really don't have anything else. I'm gonna stop the screen share for now, and I will be able to go back to it if we need to. But with that being said, I think I'm going to turn it back to the mayor, and thank you very much for your time.
Well, I appreciate the overview. I know it's a little bit garbled there. Appreciate the, the high overview of kind of what the plan is and how we are enacting it with the City of Marquette. Sean, I know you offered, if you could send out the economic development plan again to the whole commission. I have a copy here, but some of the new commissioners may not have it readily available. And also the spreadsheet that you mentioned. If you could send both of those things, I think the commission would appreciate that. And then with that, I will turn it over to each commissioner for questions and comments. We'll start with Commissioner Davis.
Oh, I'm excited I get to talk first. This kind of planning is something that is always near and dear to my heart. Dennis, thank you so much for the overview that you gave us. It really put things in perspective, and I am really excited about getting that RRC certification as soon, because that was one of my major questions, is how are we doing checking off all of that criteria? So thank you for that, and, and I look forward to seeing it in the next month. Sean, if this is, if you authored this, very impressive. Thank you very much. And I really appreciate the matrix at the end of it, and with the action plans and the percentage of things that have been accomplished. And, you know, as I looked at this plan, I was, one of the things that struck me is the continuity between this plan and all of the other documents that we have in the city. This is the first time I've seen this plan getting ready for this meeting, and it's also the first time that I've heard about the RRC. So, so I'm really glad that we're having this meeting. But as I read the plan, I could see that continuity through all of the other city documents, and that's really very important. So maybe this is a question for Sean, for starters, and, you know, hopefully I won't take up too much time. I really appreciate that we have the complete and incompletes. These kind of plans never have everything totally complete, and I think that we've done a great job getting to where we want to do. I don't see a timeline for this plan. It's not a two-year or a three-year. So that when things are complete, can I assume you're going to just eliminate them from the plan? And then when do we review that and add different things? And how do you?
I can, I can answer that, since it's probably going to come from my department. So thank you, Commissioner, for the kind words, and we appreciate that. And this will be regularly updated. Now, the community master plan is required to be updated every five years by state law, but our planning commissioner and city planner have taken it upon themselves to, they want to do a review every year. COVID set them back a little bit. The last update was in twenty eighteen. I had spoke with Mr. Stensis today, and they're looking at twenty twenty-one or so for an update, and that would be the appropriate time, because this is actually an appendix chapter of the community master plan. When they update that plan, then Sean and myself and the city manager would sit down and take a look at the update to this, and we would rely on the city manager to be the, the eyes and the ears with the city commission and, and work through, have a dialogue with them at that time, probably through a work session or whatnot, to receive your input, and then put that into our super-secret planning formula, and then come out, come out with another document for you to adopt right around the time of that master plan. So I, you know, typically these things last about five years, but I, I think we're a little bit ahead of the ballgame, so we're looking at doing it every, you know, two years or so.
I think, I think it's great to do it in a couple of years, and with so many things already completed, it's, it is time to acknowledge that. I also noted, and I don't know if there's a chance to update them every year, but every, as we update this, and you already mentioned that the chamber is no longer there, I also am wondering if the Superior Trade Zone is still active?
Yes, that Superior Trade Zone or the next Michigan Development Act is, I believe our CFO, Gary Simpson, is the appointed member that goes to those meetings. They still do somewhat meet, although there is unfortunately not a lot of activity or utilization of, of that program. Those are for much larger-scale projects, but we still are an active member in participation.
Okay. I do have, Gary Simpson is right here and can comment on that briefly if you'd like.
Okay.
I don't know if you can see him.
Hi. Thank you, Commissioner Davis. I'm just impressed anybody remembered we're a part of that organization.
Actually, yes.
I am the city's representative to that group, and for those that don't know, it's a, a bi-county organization of Delta County and Marquette County. And not only the counties, but the townships and the... County and not only the counties, but the townships and the cities within. And we haven't met in a while. To be honest, the organization is really kind of struggling to define what exactly they're supposed to do, but it is designed to, and it's mostly around transportation, but it's designed to help both counties with economic development and we can partner and help each other out instead of, the way economic development works now, it's like the city of Marquette versus the city of Esconada and every other city and township in the UP. And it's really designed to bring us together so that we're working toward a common goal to make each of us strong. But like I said, it's a little rough going right now. We're trying to really define what we're going to do and really how to get funding is the biggest part of it. But we do meet periodically, so we're getting there, but right now there's really not much to report on, but it is still an active organization and the potential is, you know, pretty good. But I would have to say right now we're struggling a little bit, but we'll get there.
Okay. So then I just have one other comment about the updates. And as you look at updating the plan, and I know, you know, it's always difficult to decide what kind of demographics to add, but reconsider some of the demographics of our community and of course they're going to change with the new census, but what kind of things might we be adding to there? And I'm always struck by the amount of poverty we have in the city of Marquette and it's like 26% of our, of our community. And that's extremely high. It's only like 15 or 16% in the county and in the state. And there are reasons for that. We have all of the low income housing and we have the students, but it's something that I feel that we need to acknowledge because some of the money that's spent in our community comes from those social assistance programs that the lower income people have in their possession. The other thing, and this is just me and the healthcare, as I read the history of the hospital, I was just disappointed that it wasn't recognized that we actually had two hospitals, two community hospitals in the city that in the 1970s decided to merge and there was a group of citizens that made a concerted effort to become a regional medical center. So it wasn't just one hospital with St. Mary's and St. Luke's and the, the vision of those people to merge the hospital, which is not an easy thing. It was a lot of, there was a lot of controversy and involved in it, but there was a conscientious decision for Marquette to become the regional medical center before anyone else in the Upper Peninsula did. And I, I feel that that was a missing part of our history. So just consider adding that. And I think I'm done.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Good questions and comments for sure. Trying to figure out where I am alphabetically because I don't have like to be able to look over. I believe it's Commissioner Hanley. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I don't have too much. I do, reading this, it's amazing and you guys have done amazing work. I was looking at the parts, the action items that we didn't complete on the opportunity two. And from what I can see, most of those are just because we didn't have events is what I've noticed, I think, right? Correct? So do you expect to be able to meet those this coming year or are we going to find something to do in place of those? Because it doesn't look like the opportunities are going to be there super early to have big events, at least as of now.
I'd be happy to answer that. Thank you, Commissioner. That's a really good question. And one of the things that we're kicking around right now with the executive director of the Downtown Development Authority is there's been a lot of discussion in the planning community regarding how do we help these businesses get through the winter time? And we recently attended some informational webinars put on by the, there was one by the MML, there's another one coming up by the Michigan Planning Association. And they're looking at, you know, how you can set up safe events outdoors, sorry, phone, outdoors in the winter time in a way to help your community. So we're looking at a number of events that way as well as we move into the winter time, I believe we'll be looking at some discussions, looking at the possibility of some safer events next year. Now, no, you know, a lot of those really, those events depend on the, on the private sector or the other than government nonprofits, the Kiwanis or whoever may put on those type of events. And a lot of that is going to have to do with the interface with them. So most certainly we are starting to think about that with those organizations on, on how we're going to do that. But it raises a very interesting question of, you know, what, what is the plan B for tourism and the events? And, you know, at this point in time, I don't have a clear answer to that, but it is really a question that is probably worth some debate.
Okay. Thank you. I don't think I have too much else.
Mayor Protem Hill?
I guess I, I don't, I don't quite understand if we're having a session about economic development going forward, I don't understand how we're going to deal with COVID with what we have in front of us. And, so, it, so, and I, and you just said, you know, first, you know, we're having to figure out, I mean, we're literally having these conversations, you know, daily. So, but it would help me to understand how is this enormous crisis opportunity, you know, we can read crisis as an opportunity, how are we going to bring that into this, into the documents and planning sessions?
I can take an attempt at helping with that. So thank you, Commissioner. That's a very good question. Aside from the events and the tourism aspect of things, we have noticed in our department that the bricks and mortar, economic development, construction, trades, job creation of the new things is by far away in the best year that we've had in a long time. We have a lot of proposals coming forward that, there's one being discussed tonight at the planning commission level to where people are making investments and doing things. So the more traditional brick and mortar type of things we see as being fairly normal, but the tourism side really leaves, leaves the question of discussion. And I really think to importantly address that, that's, that's going to take more than the city commission. I think we would probably want to engage the Convention and Visitors Bureau, we want to engage a lot of those people involved in that tourism and, and have for, you know, lack of a better term, the tourism plan put together to think about that. Because in my observation, even with COVID this past year, we were, I think, somewhat a little bit unprepared for the amount of tourism that we saw because it just came and it came, we had a shutdown and then people came flying across that bridge and it put a really large burden on the community to make a lot of quick and rapid reactionary decisions to things. I don't particularly think any of those were bad. I think the, the mayor and city commission did excellent job of helping out the businesses when we had, you know, recommended the outdoor dining and the waving of some of the zoning and so on and so forth. But, you know, to circle back, one of my traditional long answers, I really think the tourism is the one that you're going to need to address. The bricks and mortar stuff, I honestly think that's been businesses, people are still looking to buy property. Houses don't stay on the market for longer than five days. We're seeing turnover in businesses that are positive and we're getting a lot of interest from developers.
That's, see, that's really, that's the kind of information that I thought we'd be talking about today. I, I, so that's really, really helpful. I guess, because there are also, and maybe I missed this, but the actual documentation of what our tax base is and what our employment base is, that, you know, those are the first two goals. So, you know, I thought we would actually be presented with what those, what that information is. So did I, did I miss that somewhere or, I, I don't know how to talk about growing our base and our employment when I don't know what those numbers are.
We did not present that information this evening. I guess that was probably our fault on making an assumption that a lot of that information is already in the community master plan and the background appendices that we have in there, including the community data.
Because I guess as the commission, with our role of helping, you know, with community input, identifying what our goals should be, that just seems pretty fundamental to me. So I'm.
I understand, Mayor Protem, but the, the purpose of tonight is not to identify the goals, it's an overview of what is currently in place so that the commission has a greater understanding as to, you know, what we have approved last September when we approved the economic development plan, what the city staff has been doing with that plan in the meantime, so that, you know, we can have an understanding of what that looks like and maybe next steps if, you know, there are properties that need to be developed. If we, you know, get into strategic planning and we want to talk about some things, this is kind of a baseline conversation. We're not, you know, looking at the tax base and trying to determine the percent that we want to increase it this year.
I, I understand that, but I don't even know what the tax base is, right? I'm just saying.
I don't have it handy, but.
Pardon?
I don't have it handy, is what I said.
Right. I, I understand that. I'm just, I'm pointing out that it's, that's, I'm just, I guess I, I understand like a high level, but like, you know, there's 50,000, then there's 30,000. So I, I think, 30,000 would be helpful. I'm not seeking to say, you know, it's going to be this, that or the other, but I literally can't say anything. And I think, so if we could be, you know, and the master, community master plan, I mean, I have the copy, it's this big. So if, if you could help us just have ready access to that information tied to the goals, here's where we are, here's where we've been, that would be really helpful. And then, the, the other part, again, I guess also, I just, it's really, again, I just, looking forward, rather than looking historical all the time, we've got huge changes coming on us, the changes in the office, uses of office space, the, the, as you said, Dennis, the unforeseen incredible increase in tourism that we had, the changing nature of who's actually coming to visit and who the house, people buying houses because they want to get out of the cities, people, I've talked to landlords who've, who've talked about how they had people come up in other, in seasons we don't normally have people because they wanted to get away from COVID back when we were low. So I, I expect, and then the changes that are coming with, the changes with the electric vehicles, which, you know, there's going to be a big meeting tomorrow and there's more coming there. There's addressing questions of climate change and housing, office space, electric vehicles, all those kinds of questions. And when, when or how do we have those conversations? I appreciate the background and the historical update, but how do we get to what comes next? Do we have a second?
I would say that we would be getting to look at strategic planning would be our next step in that direction. I anticipate we will do that in 2021 as a commission. And then, you know, the next go around of the community master plan, which Dennis, remind me what year that comes up, which that is where the community has a lot of input into what.
Yeah, exactly. That, thank you, thank you, Mayor. And the community master plan is really the driving force for all of the plans and it helps inform the economic development strategy that we come up with. So, you know, we're looking at doing an update to the plan in, in 2021 and that would be a really appropriate time, like I said, to have work session and engagement with the planning commission and the community to, to identify or bring forth some more of those ideas that you have.
I didn't realize that was coming up quite this quickly. So that's, I guess, good news that these are things that we want to talk about in the draft.
We only, we only lost a year, right? Almost a year of our lives so far.
And then I guess the only other question of economic that I, that I don't, that I don't still quite understand is, the, I see, the, the third one is the job opportunities and retaining existing talent. So I, I think, again, I, I like to know, have a base understanding of what the, where we are now. And I don't even know necessarily how you measure with job retention and things like that. So I think I would appreciate some, some information about that because I think that's going to be really critical because the, the businesses that we have now had, you know, weeks to figure out how to completely change their business models. And then many of them were asking to operate at 25% capacity, 50% capacity, which they were never designed to do. And so what can we be doing to help support them in this incredible, challenging time and making sure that we're speaking up for them? And that's my last question, comment.
The screen kind of froze a little bit there, sorry. You know, I would say, on that note, I think that it would be important for us to have some of those metrics. I agree with you, Mayor Protem Hill, especially given this COVID situation. And I'm hoping that maybe that can be part of our discussion as time moves along here. I don't know that we have an answer on that one tonight. I'm looking at Dennis and Sean, but I don't, I doubt that we do. So, okay. All right. Moving on to Commissioner Mayor.
Madam Mayor, can I just, just ask something real quick? Just a logistical thing?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm getting from some people that, and maybe I just missed this, but that we're not live on YouTube and I just kind of pull up YouTube on the side here and I can't find the live stream.
We were live at one point, so let's.
We're still live. It's not under the city of Marquette YouTube account, it's under an alternate stream. I posted the link on our Facebook and it's, let's see.
Is that because the planning commission is also meeting right now?
Yeah, I had to be a little creative in getting it to work. So if people go to the city Facebook page, there's a link directly to it or they can go to marquettemi.gov/alternatestream and it'll take them right to it.
Okay, thank you. And then the other thing is that I know that we did have, I've had, gotten a couple of messages from three or four, I think it was three or four people that wanted to make public comment kind of at the end of the meeting and were hoping to listen in. And one gentleman who was on earlier, he got, he said he got kicked off. I don't know if we can just check the, the waiting, the waiting room and maybe just let in people so you can at least listen in since they're having a hard time finding the YouTube stream?
Sure. I have two people in the waiting room right now I can let in. They just still need to mute.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonzo. Okay, go ahead, Commissioner Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Commissioner Bonzo, for bringing that up. I do have a couple of questions, but I do, I do want to express the fact that what Commissioner Hill was just talking about to some degree, I, I kind of feel the same way. This feels, this feels a lot like a presentation, but it doesn't really seem like a lot of discussion where we're getting to discuss a lot of issues or policy wise, which I guess if, if that was the plan for tonight, that's fine. It's, it's not what I was personally thinking going into this. But one thing I guess I will ask is, you know, I've seen on the spreadsheet that we have that as far as, you know, supporting investment in downtown, you know, there was some, in fact, we relaxed some of our permitting requirements because of COVID. What are some things? What are some things that we're doing? You know, as far as zoning or land development code wise to assist, you know, being more friendly to local businesses? Um, or assisting, you know, increasing more of a price diversity in the housing market in the city other than just temporary COVID me- measures?
I'd be happy to answer that. Thank you, Commissioner, for the opportunity. Um, there are some forthcoming amendments to the Land Development Code that will be before the City Commission notice. I believe in the next meeting, there'll be notice for a public hearing. So at the subsequent meeting, um, they will be up for, uh, approval by the City Commission. And, and I believe before you were on the commission, we had a work session with the City Commission, or, or, I'm sorry, with the Planning Commission, where the Planning Commission walked the City Commission through a lot of those amendments. And there are a number of amendments in there that are going to directly address your question. Um, a lot of them deal with more flexibility in residential development for duplexes, triplexes and multifamily homes to allow for more affordable housing. They are reducing a lot of the, or restrictions that were placed on accessory dwelling units, which would be a secondary, uh, secondary home or say on a, on a parcel that would be considered affordable or an apartment over a garage or something like that. So they're loosening those restrictions. Um, in the site plan review part of the code, uh, we are moving to a more administrative approval approach. So unless it's a really, really big development, um, you're going to see a lot of administrative approval by the zoning administrator. Of course, they still have to meet the standards, but it reduces the burden of, of going to the Planning Commission and reduces the time uh, in the development and, and so on. Those are, those are really a couple of examples that come to mind, but we're continually moving forward to do those type of things. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, and just to follow up there, um, you know, without knowing more specifics, you know, I, I understand broadly, I guess, what you're at least talking about with getting, though getting in specifics regarding the housing. But, um, for the small business aspect for the downtown development, um, is there any changes there other than just making things a little bit more streamlined? That's, any changes made there, I guess?
Um, I guess what kind of changes would you be look, I, I need something to kind of trigger my, my brain on this one, but.
Right, so I mean, a lot of what you just mentioned were, it, it, you know, in regards to zoning for housing. Um, is there anything of kind of that same caliber as far as within, you know, Third Street Corridor, the, you know, commercial districts or?
Oh, yeah, yeah, these, these are being applied, uh, you know, just because even the Third Street Corridor will have the same, you know, if it's a mixed use property, it's a mixed use property, whether it's on Third or somewhere else in the community and those type of things. So they apply across the board to certain zoning districts. So it's not just specifically targeting one area. Again, it's targeting the environment as a, as a whole. So in, in the business districts, X, Y and Z will apply and those changes were proposed in, in each one of those districts.
And Commissioner Mayor, I think maybe what you're asking is like the temporary measures that we enacted in the spring, like, uh, you know, allowing businesses to have expanded outdoor seating and maybe their private parking area or adjacent parking spots. Um, are those the kinds of things that you're asking about, making more flexible for businesses to be able to conduct business during COVID? Is that, am I understanding your question?
Uh, partially, Madam Mayor. That and not even just temporary, are there any more, are there any changes within that same kind of stream of thought that we're looking at more long-term wise and not just temporary as well? It's more or less what I was getting at.
Yep, I understand the question. Um, I don't, I don't know of any right now that we've put into place, maybe, maybe Dennis does.
Yeah, there, there are, um, well, first and foremost, the ones that were put into place are allowed, are allowed to continue through the end of the order as it gets, keeps getting, um, extended. Um, there are some instances in the Land Development Code where some amendments are being brought forward that, um, do allow for some of those things to take place, uh, in, in a more permanent nature. And, um, we've lessened the burden on that because typically if you want to have, say, like an outdoor dining area, uh, a good example would be Stucco's on Third, right? Well, if you want to use that parking lot, you have to get a special use permit. And that special use permit means you have to have a set of plans and then you have to go before the Planning Commission on a public hearing. And then the Planning Commission starts getting into the weeds about what color is this going to be and so on and so forth. It costs a lot of money and it costs a lot of time. Some of the changes that are recommended that will be coming up for adoption, um, you still need to get a permit, but it's not going to be going before the Planning Commission. For, you know, a judge of nine, it's going to be the zoning administrator looking at it to make sure it meets the standards of the ordinance and you get your permit. So the, there are a lot of examples in there, I think you'll find that are very similar to some of the COVID stuff. You know, the COVID stuff, we said, you just don't need a permit, go do what you got to do. Um, but when we get into a non-COVID situation, there are forces other than the City of Marquette that require us to do these permits. You know, the state construction code, county building codes and state statute for planning and zoning requires us to do a lot of the things we do. We're just trying to make it easier. Within the constraints of the law.
Yeah, just one quick thing to add. Um, I mean, since this plan was adopted, uh, the City Commission and Planning Commission did look over the Land Development Code and allow recreational marijuana businesses in the downtown district. And that has resulted in one business opening and another, um, property that looked like it was in pretty, uh, bad repair, uh, to be redeveloped currently and a new business to be opening shortly. So that would be an example of something we've done in the past year where we changed code to allow a brand new type of business to open and that has since happened, so.
All right.
Commissioner Mayor, did you have more, more questions or, or comments?
No, Your Honor, thank you, everyone.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stonehouse?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Uh, thank you, Sean and Dennis. A great presentation and really, I think, brings us up to speed with, uh, with where we are right at this moment. Um, as you might suspect, having been on the commission as long as I have, have been involved with this aspect of planning for some time. So in a way, it was kind of a walk down memory lane of things that were done and how the plans all come together and are mutually supporting. And that's a hard thing sometimes for all of us to get our, our hands around is that this was a moving train. And where you get on the train, the train doesn't stop. You've got to keep hopping on, it's like you're a hobo trying to get out of town with a hotel bill. Uh, but it is nice to see progress in the programs. It's, it's very nice to see how well they're aligned. Um, Superior Trade Zone, I would give credit, by the way, to, uh, Senator Casperson. He was the one that came up with that original concept, uh, that original concept appeared in one of the papers that was coming out of Lansing. And of course, when you write legislation, legislation has to be written, not to name a particular city, but to name a city of between and between a given population base. Uh, our city manager, manager at the time happened to catch that and say, wonder which one? And it turned out it was Esconaba that was scheduled to receive the Superior Trade Zone. At that point, I went down and met with the Senator and his aide and we were able to get Marquette then at that point, added in as part of that package. So a little history to it, hasn't worked well yet, but I have great hopes for the future on it. It's setting yourself up for the future and that's what it's all about. Uh, the, um, question I might have of, of the plan is whether or not we're tied in as tight as we can be with, uh, the Smart Zone and with Invent Marquette. And particularly looking at cybersecurity and cybersecurity opportunities as they might apply to the City of Marquette in terms of business. And perhaps that's a moving target, I'm sure it is, but it's one that we've got to make sure we've got a firm grip on. Uh, I would also, um, suggest that we do get it together again with Travel Marquette. We periodically have done that and tie ourselves a little tighter with what their plans are for the coming summer and what their thoughts and aspirations may be and how we have to make sure we can cover the COVID side as well as do the things the city has to do. Sometimes those two universes, us and they, tend to separate and operate in their own sphere. In reality is we have to keep, make sure that we're at least touching and coordinating tightly. Uh, one thing we are working on still is the opportunity to bring a cruise ship in. Uh, that is getting a little tighter every day and hopefully we'll be able to get that done. Of course, COVID has thrown everything out the window concerning cruising on the lakes as well as open ocean too. So until that situation resolves a little closer, it's going to be, uh, more of a hope than a reality. My last thought would be that we've done an awful lot of good things with COVID in terms of how we've been able to give things to the business community, change some plans, alter some oper- alter some requirements. I think when we're done and COVID has finally largely beaten back, we probably should sit back and say, okay, how many of these things we did, we should keep? Regardless of what the law may say, regardless of what other impediments might be there, it's not such a bad idea the way they're operating businesses. There are opportunities to get into the street, to use parking lots, to take some of the bounds off that we previously had. Now, obviously, in all cases, that will not work. But I think there's opportunities for it that we don't want to just throw out unilaterally. We want to look at each one and see if it can work for everybody. Because we do have to keep that economic lifeblood going. And, uh, I think I, like all of you, are just aghast at how a business that needs 100% occupancy or 100% uh, capability to, to, to be able to turn a buck and earn, earn an honest living is required to do so on 25%. And oh, by the way, you're going to be shut for three weeks at least. Uh, so we, we certainly have to try and prop up our local businesses, particularly through this difficult time. Uh, nothing further, Your Honor. Thank you very much for the opportunity. And thanks, Dennis, again, and Sean for a great job.
Thank you, and Commissioner Bonzo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I, I just, I, I want to, uh, reiterate, I think, um, a couple of things I wanted to talk about, uh, some of my uh, colleagues have already mentioned. I do have to say, you know, I, I definitely see where, um, you know, Mayor Protem Hill and Commissioner Mayor are coming from and in terms of, I guess, I did also come into this meeting with a, a somewhat different understanding of what this conversation was going to be. Um, but, and I do hope that in the future, we can maybe have some more of those kind of, uh, these conversations about policies and changes that we can implement in the future. Um, so I, I definitely, that being said, I definitely do appreciate all the work that, you know, Sean and Dennis have done to put this presentation together and is very informative and very helpful. Um, to be honest, before this, I hadn't read our Economic Development Plan, so, uh, that was a, a really, uh, great educational opportunity for me. Um, I, I suppose I, I, just a couple of things I wanted to touch on. Um, I think the, uh, fundamental economic challenge that Marquette is facing right now is sort of like a chicken and egg problem where on the one hand, we have housing costs that are rising faster than household incomes. More and more people are not able to afford to live in the City of Marquette. And then at the same time, on the other hand, we aren't creating many good family sustaining jobs in the city. And mostly the economic growth we've seen in recent years has been from tourism. Um, or, you know, it's been sort of like shorter term, like construction jobs. Um, and while tourism needs to be an important part of our economic development strategy and certainly is a major component of our current economic development plan, uh, tourism alone mostly is going to be producing lower wage service sector jobs that for the most part, they're not going to be paying enough to allow people to meet the basic needs that they have in the city. So I think the, the question that we need to answer moving forward as we continue to revise this plan and have further conversations about economic development and economic recovery is how do we create good paying jobs at a variety of education levels and a variety of industries and kind of diversify? Which is a goal of the current, uh, Economic Development Plan. And how do we make sure that people can actually afford to live in the city once they get those jobs? Um, so I think that there's a couple of things that, you know, sort of, uh, definitely after what Commissioner Mayor left off, there are some lessons that we can learn, in my mind, from what has worked during COVID-19. Um, I really like the points that he made, um, and some of the points that Dennis made about, um, the various like, sort of reactions and permitting requirements that we remade, um, with regards to sign up that phase, outdoor merchandise displays. Uh, not really, we also sort of, we're not really enforcing, uh, minimum off-street parking requirements to allow businesses to, uh, you know, repurpose some of their off-street parking for other, other, other purposes to help them do business outdoors in the face of restrictions. Um, and I think that, um, you know, it's kind of interesting because, you know, we relaxed some permitting requirements. Um, we've been trying to encourage outdoor dining, outdoor sales. Um, we, you know, functionally haven't been forcing businesses to comply with our minimum parking requirements. Um, as long as they're, you know, utilizing that parking space for other purposes. And if, if anything, it's helped the businesses, hasn't hurt businesses. I don't think it's seriously inconvenienced anyone, nobody's died.
You know, um, and so I think that maybe we need to think about whether we allow those, uh, policies to continue in the future um, on a permanent basis in some form or another. Um, you know, I also think, two other things I just wanted to mention briefly. Uh, so I think that one limiting factor for Marquette in terms of economic development that I hope we can discuss more in the future is, uh, high-speed broadband internet access. Um, so like now, in, you know, 2020 and moving forward, like one gigabyte per second broadband internet is going to be like the basic standard um, for any tech businesses, uh, remote workers, um, you know, modern manufacturers that who upload and download huge files every day. And, uh, currently you can't even buy one gigabyte per second internet in Marquette, which has by far the fastest internet speeds available of anywhere in the U.P. Um, and it, and even then, you know, it's, it's quite expensive, even what you can buy that kind of gets you close to one gigabyte per second. So I, I think that what we should really be doing is looking at what other communities like Holland, Michigan, Traverse City, even the Village of Launce have done with regards to, uh, downtown, high-speed, uh, public wifi, uh, municipal broadband service that actually is more price competitive than, um, any, you know, private, uh, it can be more price competitive than, uh, private internet providers in many cases. Uh, for example, in Traverse City. Um, and, and, and so that's, I think, an opportunity for growth that we need to really think about, uh, in an area where the City of Marquette, um, perhaps in concert with like NMU or the Borderlight and Power could play a role um, in, in encouraging economic development and creating an environment where economic growth can take place in the 21st century. And then finally, I'll be very brief at this last one. I, I just think we need to take advantage of the opportunity zone that exists on the north side of Marquette. Um, you know, of course, in the federal tax reform law that was passed a couple of years ago, uh, various areas were designated as opportunity zones or essentially like developers can get tax breaks um, for developing in those areas. The north side of Marquette is one of those opportunity zones. And I know there's a lot of, like, local champions of, of OZs who are, who really want to work with us on this. I think a couple of them are on the call today that are, maybe will be offering some public comment. And I think it would be a real shame if we didn't take advantage of that opportunity. Um, so with that, I'll be done, but just a, a few, uh, things to think about. You know, regulatory reform, broadband and internet access and, uh, the opportunity zone on the north side of town. I think are points that we should, that haven't been talked about enough that we should be focusing on moving forward.
Thank you. You know, um, I think that almost every commissioner brought up some, some good ideas for discussion and, and conversation. And, you know, a lot of good points for a starting, a starting point for conversation for these plans that we're going to be working on um, in the next year, the strategic plan and the Community Master Plan. Um, one thing I was hoping to ask about is, Dennis, I was wondering if you could just quickly run through a couple of the properties that we, um, have up for sale that we could potentially be seeing as, as sold or negotiated in the coming year, like such as Cliff's Dull or those kinds of things? Just so, um, kind of refresh our memory on that quickly.
Yeah, absolutely, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, the Cliff's Dull property is currently being negotiated and that would be the entire property from uh, Wright Street on the west side of relocated Lake Shore Boulevard are all the way up to, uh, basically Holly Street with the exception of two private parcels that are in there. We continue to.
We continue to negotiate with Veridia Development for that property. I have been in contact with them. Just last week, I understand that they have ordered appraisal. And their appraisal that they were getting was taking a little bit of a time because they're, they want to get somebody that can can look at it and do a fair appraisal, giving the, what they can concern with the environmental on the on that property, of course, some, that's some legacy that we're going to have to work with. But those negotiations are moving forward. They are genuinely still interested in the property. And again, you know, once they get that appraisal back, we'll be back to the table and hopefully we can bring something forward to the city commission on that. Another potential development that I've just been working on this past week is on McClellan Avenue and it is north of Fair Avenue, between Fair and Wright Street and some of the residential property that was left over from the McClellan Extension. We're looking at working possibly with a partner in affordable housing development for missing middle market rate type housing. There'll be more information coming on that. I don't have a whole lot that I can share at this point because it's in the very early stages, but it does look extremely promising and would allow the city to have a little bit of skin in the game, for lack of a better term. But it would be in such a way that it would be very less likely to cause any potential harm to the taxpayers or have the optic as such. So it looks like a very promising project. We are set to shortly close on the property that was sold to the Nikamenon Trail Network. That would be on the corner of Division and 553, their trailhead and beyond there, back there a little bit. I believe Sean is working on some of the title work on that now and that will be closed on in a relatively short period of time. The city commission has also authorized the sale of parcels nine through 11, which would be just south of the old dump. Veridia did transfer their rights to that property to Longyear. And I have been meeting with Longyear on a weekly basis going through the, we just recently finished the Phase One Environmental Assessment for the property, which to no surprise is going to require a Phase Two simply because it's adjacent to an old landfill. That's one of the things that triggers a further in-depth environmental study. But we meet on a somewhat regular basis. We're looking to close on that property. I believe we have another 60 days and then we'll be able to close that property with Longyear. And that that development that you're doing for the benefit of the new commissioners that may not have been involved with the previous process, that's biotechnology. I mean, that's little medical instrument manufacturing. Those are really good paying jobs for folks that like our quality of life here. And that's going to produce some jobs. And in my discussions with Longyear, they're actually looking at setting up the property to where it could potentially become kind of like a mini business park for that type of thing, maybe like what we have up in Pioneer Park where Veridia used to be at and Trimedia used to be at. Now I think it's a kidney dialysis lab or whatnot, but so something similar along those lines. And when we close on those properties and keep in mind, a lot of the ones I've mentioned, you know, half of those are not requiring brownfields, so they're going to be an instant tax increase to the city. Some of them do require brownfields because of the environmental contamination. Or if we deal with the affordable housing situation, but those are the kind of trade-offs. So those are going to be some really positive growth opportunities for the city in the coming year.
Just to add to that, parcel 2A will also be closing this month. We're just working on title and deed work right now.
Great.
Thank you. I appreciate that quick update. I know it ties into this goal one of improving and diversifying the tax base. And I, most of those, you know, we know they're ongoing, but we don't see the the week to week detail as to what's going on. And we don't need to see it normally, but it just, it it's good to have an understanding that those things continue to move forward and you're working on them. Go ahead, Dennis, sorry.
I could just add to that. You know, the Cliff's Dull is a significant one because it is part of that opportunity zone. And most certainly, the developer that is interested in the property with Veridia Group, they are aware of that. You know, that opportunity zone is an interesting animal. It's basically a federal designation where all the benefit goes to the to the individual developer. And really, the city's role in it is, you know, unless it's city-owned property, we just make sure that the zoning is appropriate for whatever anyone wants to do. So, you know, I think we're pretty solid set on that. And Veridia is really excited to look at that opportunity.
Great. Well, I guess I would just ask if you could quickly explain again what some of our next steps would be as relation to economic development so that we kind of have a clear picture for that moving forward of what the commission would be doing next? You know, what staff is is working on? And then, you know, the next time that we would have to kind of talk about this.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. First and foremost, I believe it's important for us to get our redevelopment-ready certification. That's basically hinging on our development guidebook that's being put together in our planning department. Once we have that, we should be able to obtain that certification, which is really, really significant moment. From that point forward, we are, we are going to be talking about the strategic plan coming up. There will be more information on that. Most certainly, the strategic plan is the time when the the city manager, department heads and city commission work together to pick those projects to help achieve those goals that were identified in that community master plan. And we do those strategic plans every other year. So this one is, is kind of going to be an opportunity to to pick some of the fruit that we didn't get to because of COVID. And during, once we finish that and go into the same cycle, we're going to get into that community master plan update cycle, which is really important. And from that, and as as part of it are those sub-area plans of the economic development planning for moving forward. So 2021 is going to be a pretty big year for us. I'm not going to promise that because I don't know how the pandemic is going to play out, but we're going to try really hard.
Excellent. Thank you for the overview. I know, I know you touched on those things already, but it just helps to know kind of, you know, the the process that you're thinking. Commissioners, do we have any other brief questions before I go ahead and wrap up this work session? I'm looking around here. Mayor Pro Tem Hell?
Yeah, I just, I wouldn't, is it not tomorrow? But in, you know, sometime in the next couple of weeks, could we have the baseline information on tax base, employment base? Sort of what we're setting as our baseline numbers that we're measuring growth against on our goals? That would just, you know, again, not tomorrow. That may take a, I understand that's, I mean, hopefully that's in the, already in the RRC paperwork. I don't know, but is there any way we could make that happen?
I can answer that. I'd be happy to. We can get you that information. We we will extrapolate, extrapolate it out of the community master plan and get it to the city manager for disbursement to the entire commission.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Banzo, did you have something?
Oh, no, I just wanted to make sure that we were still going to have our public comment session at the end.
Yep, absolutely. Yep. That's what we will be doing next. Well, thank you again to Dennis and Sean for a nice presentation and for the work that you've been doing and to, you know, to the rest of the staff behind the scenes that we didn't see this evening. We will go ahead and move on here to our second public comment session of the evening. Comments may not exceed three minutes per person. Please state your name and physical address when making public comments. I know we've got a couple of people on the Zoom call here.
They will both unmute themselves. I can't do it for them. They just have to hit star six on their phone.
Okay. I'm hoping they're listening. And then do, we don't have any written comment, correct, Sean?
Correct.
Okay. And it looks like we've got this phone number that starts in 720. Go ahead whenever you're ready. You have three minutes.
All right. I appreciate it. My name is Jason Nagy and I am in Denver, Colorado. I'm a good friend of Chris Case, who I believe was also on the call. And he just moved back to his hometown. We met in South Africa. And I'm particularly interested in the possibilities of collaborating on the Opportunity Zones program. So I was happy to hear that discussed as part of economic development today. I'm working with the communities here in Colorado and would like to share kind of best practices with, you know, some of the leaders that are working on programs here. I think we've got a tremendous opportunity to collaborate with the city and attract outside investment as part of the Opportunity Zones program, of course, that's actually, you know, taking capital that has been gained to and and, you know, creating these incentives programs. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Yeah, and and, you know, incentivizing them, you know, with the with the deferral of the taxes, a reduction of the taxes and then potential elimination when that money is held in the opportunity zones for, you know, in the opportunity zone fund or in the opportunity zone businesses for at least 10 years. And what I, you know, I've been communicating to, you know, Chris and and some of the other stakeholders there in Marquette is one of the, you know, first best practices is is developing a community prospectus. The Economic Innovation Group, you know, is a group that, you know, helped form the Opportunity Zones program through the legislation, through the 2017, you know, Tax Act. And that group, you know, does propose, you know, for each community, and that's what's been done here in Colorado, was, you know, out of the 126 opportunity zones here in Colorado, many of them incorporate, you know, large portions of of small cities like Marquette. And those cities that have been, you know, for at the forefront of developing prospectuses specific to the opportunity zones, you know, have been able to get out ahead and and attract funds. You know, it's across the board. Again, it's it's a lot of real estate. It's been predominantly real estate. But as we move into, you know, we're looking at, obviously with the Biden administration, you know, the tax rates, you know, will probably creep back up. And what's going to be particularly attractive really is beyond the, beyond the kind of conservative plays with real estate, which are more standard and expected, are the opportunities to create entrepreneurship and, you know, qualified opportunities on businesses that may work in some of the co-working spaces. Now, Marquette is really strong with its university community. You've got a number of the things that you want to tick off in making an opportunity zone attractive, which, you know, university anchored zone, the importance of affordable housing as part of that workforce development as part of the strategy, iconic local landmarks there, your whole story that
And your three minutes is up, sir. We appreciate your comments this evening. Thank you for joining us.
All right. Thank you very much.
Anyone else for public comment?
Hi, yeah, sorry, this is Chris. Case, I can just kind of jump in a little bit.
Okay. And your physical address, sir?
3006 Lake Shore Boulevard. Oh, sorry, I went to the road now. By Marquette.
Okay, go ahead.
All right. You know, just so piggybacking off on the opportunity zone, I think one of the innovative things that can be done is you enable the city to attract entrepreneurs, people that are coming to the university. With everybody that goes to the university, they won't have a job when they finish. So ideally, if Invent and Inmu, the Smart Zone can use a separator model that they're having to keep on driving small businesses to be created, it'll enable a lot more people to stay local. So I think, you know, if you look at plots of land or different companies like Longyear or Veridia that are already here that potentially partner with other smaller developers and look at those projects. I think everybody, you know, can agree that a lot of, you know, great developments has been happening with Veridia. But at the same time, a lot of other developers are not, you know, doing maybe what they can because they don't have access to capital, which the opportunity zone could potentially bring in. But if the city were able to come and be cheerleaders really behind that initiative and really kind of drive it into smaller businesses, I think that's really key for, you know, creating more jobs, quality jobs that could really take place in the city. And I would just second also with getting the speed of internet up, 5G is here now. If we're going to be a remote site, you know, remote working site, which I think we have great potential to be, you could really capitalize on that and with, you know, attracting with those kinds of incentives. And that, you know, the city is pretty small, at least building it out downtown, I think, would be a great investment for the city. That's it.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else for public comment this evening? Making sure that we didn't have anyone else join in on the call. Commissioner Banzo, did you have something you wanted to add? Looks like you're on mute.
Yeah, I I was just wondering, you know, would it be, I understand this, you know, may not be within the rules of procedure here, but would it be possible to have the gentleman that was speaking before maybe just like briefly finish his thought there in just like a minute or two? Because I I was really interested in what he was saying and I think that it would be helpful. Maybe some other commissioners feel the same way.
I don't feel comfortable with that. I have to say, we've always held to the three minutes and I I don't want to set a precedent for changing that at this point. I would say if that gentleman would like to forward his emails to, or forward his comments in an email to either myself or to the city clerk, that we'd be happy to pass that along to the commission as an attachment. That's how I, you know, that's what I'd be comfortable with at this point. All right. Do we have anyone else for public comment?
Thank you.
Seeing no additional public comment, public comment is now closed. And I think that does conclude our work session this evening. I know we'll continue these discussions in the future. Thanks again to city staff and to the commission for your thoughts and good questions this evening.